Good evening. We'd like to welcome you to our June 2nd, 2020 Town Council Meeting. Here we are. We have several agenda items tonight and some that I know are very important to the public and that we are going to need to continue so that we have ample time for a public hearing. So, right now, we'll move to communications from citizens. Are there any requests to speak?
I haven't received any, Mayor, but there may be some.
Do, okay. Is it Rick Blazer? Oh, terrific. Okay. Rick, we'll have you join the line and if you could state your name and your city of residence, or town.
My name is, yep, my name is Rick Blazer. I live in the town of Gilbert.
Thank you, Rick. You have three minutes.
Hi, Mayor and City Council. I was looking forward to speaking to you in person today, but I do understand with everything that's going on, I'm glad that you were able to still make this happen and give me the opportunity to talk with you today. I wanted to really start by expressing my frustrations with the meeting that occurred on May 5th of 2020 regarding the development that is going to be developed on Higley and Riggs. I spent a large amount of time and effort to research and give a comprehensive speech that contained some important questions. The questions were not acknowledged. There was no follow-up questions or comments from the City Council. It seemed as though your minds were already made up and my statement was ignored. I'm gonna give this another shot because I know that sometimes things can happen and can be overlooked, but I'm going to go over my, the questions that I had at that time. First one was, the traffic study that was completed in August of 2019 does not take into account the 509 homes on Valvista and Chandler Heights that are two and a half miles away from the proposed development. I contacted the company that completed the traffic study. I spoke to Andrew Smolinski to confirm this. It was no fault of the traffic's company. They do micro-studies and don't go that distance, but I do believe it is an opportunity for consideration and for further, in future projects, to take into account surrounding projects. I believe that you would agree with that and I just wanted to make sure that that is something that is looked into. Second is the town's, is it, is it the town's policy to have someone from the city attend the neighborhood meetings? The reason I ask this is that when I reviewed the minutes of those meetings that were submitted to the City Council and the project managers, it seems as though many of the questions or answers that did not support what the development was trying to do were either left out, blank, on the responses, and then they were submitted to the City Council and the project managers that way. The third one is, why do develop, why does it seem like developers and the developers' attorneys get more access to you, the City Council and the project managers than the citizens themselves do? It seems like the attorney who lives in Mesa doesn't get, they get more access to you than the citizens who actually live in Gilbert. The developer as well is in Phoenix, but, but we don't get the amount of access that they do to you. They have many correspondence with you over a long period of time and seem to always get a quick reply. I thought it was also interesting that the attorney brushed off my comments due to the community that I live in. His exact quote was, "That was just the country's shadows residence." So, do I not have a voice if I don't live in a million-dollar house? I noticed that, I'll refer to him as Mr. S., who lives in Monteverde, requested a single-story homes bordering his property and it was granted, but mine was rejected seemingly due to where I live. And I just want to see if that is something that is approved by the City Council as well. I also have, the last thing I want to have explained is that 93% of those residents that were in favor of the project were only in favor due to the promise of commercial being built. And do you think there is a sort of bait and switch when the commercial is not guaranteed in this project? It is proposed and there's going to be landscaped, but it is not guaranteed. And I want to end by saying, citizens are growing completely, increasingly frustrated with the local government because we are simply not listened to. We, I hope that you will take the time to really think about what I have said here today and not just send me an email saying, "Thank you for your comments," or repeat things off the PowerPoint that the attorney has, has already sent out or already made available. The other citizens and myself would appreciate the answer to these questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. And because this is communications from citizens, I know that this may increase the frustration and I apologize for that, but we are not allowed to respond because this is not an agendized item. So, I would encourage you to share your prepared comments today with the council via email and that would give us an opportunity to individually respond. So, thank you. The clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Dan Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Young Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Scott September.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Spence.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Yentes.
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you and thank you for joining us by phone tonight, Amy, Councilmember Yentes. At this time, we will ask Councilmember Jared Taylor to offer our invocation and then to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity to gather here as citizens and representatives of this beautiful town. We're grateful for the opportunities to serve and strengthen each other and we pray for peace in our town, in our beautiful state, in our country. People's hearts will be softened. There will be increased understanding. We can find ways to understand and strengthen each other through service and love. Pray that Thy Spirit will be with us this evening, that we can, we as a council can make decisions in the best interest of protecting the rights of our residents and citizens. Grateful for all that Thou hast given us and express these words and ask for these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I actually messed up. It's Councilmember Spence that's leading us in the pledge. Teamwork, thanks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Spence. We have no presentations or proclamations this evening and we'll move to the consent agenda. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. We have several items to pull off the consent agenda. We'll be pulling off item four, items nine, 10, 11, and 12. And we'll note that item 14 is being continued to June 16th. With that, I move approval of item 1, 2, 3, 4A, 5, 5A, 6, 7, 8, 13, 15, 16.
And then I believe the motion needs to include that we will continue.
Items 23 and 24.
Uh, no, 24, please.
24.
Excuse me, 14.
14, yes, yes.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Point of order before we do that. Mayor, Vice Mayor, I just want to make sure everybody understood why item four from the consent agenda was being removed.
We'll be coming back to that.
Oh, okay.
We're just doing the rest of the consent agenda.
Oh, got it.
So, we have a motion on the rest of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Councilmember Yentes, thank you. That's a 7-0 vote and that moves us to Agenda Item 4. Councilmember September?
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, I have a conflict on item number four, so thank you for removing that from the consent agenda and I'm going to abstain from that vote.
Thank you, Councilmember September. Is there a motion on Agenda Item 4?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 6-0 vote. Thank you. Moves us to Agenda Item 11. Who wish to speak?
Councilmember Taylor is actually wants, well, we'll do them separately. Nine, 10, and 11 and 12.
Yeah, they're numbered in different order on my agenda. I should probably look at that.
Yeah, they are.
Okay, we'll do nine first. We'll start with nine. Sorry about that.
You put us on our toes tonight, Mayor.
Yes, my bad.
If I could just speak to nine and then I'll take 10, 11, 12 as a batch.
Perfect.
I wanted to just vote separate on this. This has to do with replacing some storage for the fluoridation process. I'm just not convinced that that's the best for the health and safety of our residents and wanted to vote separate. Thank you, Mayor.
I wish I felt comfortable voting no on that, but since it is voter-approved, I don't feel like we have a ton of options. We've discussed this ad nauseam, I think, in the community. We wish that, many of us wish that we didn't have to continue to fluoridate the water and yet it's voter-approved, so it would have to be voter-removed as well. So, with that, is there a motion on Agenda Item 9?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. And please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 6-1 vote. Thank you. 10, 11, and 12. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, we're gonna miss the annual discussion here on CBDG, aren't you? I'll be brief here. You know, this is an artifact from the New Deal and I just don't, I told, I promised the voters that I just wouldn't support policies that are redistributive in nature and I think even the honest people that supported the New Deal originally kind of look back at some of these things and say, "You know what? They're actually not working. It didn't solve poverty. They didn't really accomplish the goals and achievements." When there was an anniversary a few years ago, that was pretty apparent from right, left, and center. So, anyways, I think as we look at this, I just hope that we look at it from a results standpoint and data and saying, "Is this really solving what it's supposed to be doing?" The data shows right now that it's not, so I'd like to vote separately and of course, I'm opposed to it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Any other comments from the council? Seeing none, is there a motion for 10, 11, and 12?
I'll move.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaprowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Spence. Please vote.
No.
That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. I believe that completes our consent agenda and moves us to our public hearing items. Are there any requests on our public hearing items tonight? Seeing none, I would like to take Agenda Items 23 and 24 and look for a motion to continue those items to our June 16th, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion on those two agenda items? I don't need to do the public hearing on those.
Oh, oh, I was gonna go back to item 17A.
Did I miss one? 17A is part of our public hearing, correct?
It be, yes.
Okay, we'll come back to that one.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That continues those two very important items and I just want to make a quick comment about that. With the state's 8:00 PM curfew and the inability to move the meeting up because of statute that requires a 15-day notice for public hearing, we did not feel comfortable even pushing this to next week or trying to move the agenda item up and wanted to make sure we were having ample time for a public comment. An hour and a half, probably wouldn't have cut it, given some of the feedback that we've, we've been hearing and receiving and I'm actually really grateful. There's several individuals in the community that I would like to reply to and have not had time, given all of the activities. So, I'm grateful for the extra two weeks, although I would have loved to hear from our residents tonight. So, I apologize, but I do think we made the best decision possible, given the circumstances. All right. Is there any requests from our council on any of the other public hearing items? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing on Agenda Items 17, 17A, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22.
Mayor Daniels, I did have citizens that wanted to say how they felt about 17A.
Okay, we will come back then.
Okay.
I will open the public hearing on 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22. I will close the public hearing on those agenda items and entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That takes us to 17A. Is it the two attachments that we have on the dais?
Uh, no ma'am. This was the comment and Christine Mann and Dan Mann just wanted to say that they were against the item.
Okay, thank you. I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 17A. For the record, I do feel like since we did have public opposition, it's probably important to introduce actually what that was so that there's some clarity around it. I apologize. It's general plan GP 19-15 and zoning Z 19-27. It's an adoption of a resolution approving a minor general plan amendment to change the land use classification of approximately 17.85 acres, generally located at the southwest corner of Valvista Drive and Ocatillo Road from residential to general commercial, and approve the findings and adoption of an ordinance for Lifetime South Gilbert, which I believe is a gym, to rezone approximately 17.85 acres of real property, generally located at the southwest corner of Valvista Drive and Ocatillo Road from SF 35, Single Family 35 Zoning District to a general commercial zoning district. There is a PAD overlay to maximize the building height requirement and to modify setback requirements for certain buildings within 90 feet of residential property. So, that is a new lifetime fitness, similar to the one we have adjacent to Town Hall, that will be on the southwest corner. I believe it's close by the Marrikey property where there's a substantial subdivision being built. Okay, with that, we have opened the public hearing, closed the public hearing, and we can entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Of course.
You know, having lived close to the lifetime that's right here, I can say that they've, they're really good neighbors. And I think when this comes through planning, they just need to check traffic patterns and make sure that we have, they're already through it. That's part, oh, that's, okay. So, that, so they've definitely done that because I know that I've given input on the traffic patterns at this lifetime fitness, but I can say that they definitely have been good neighbors. It's a great amenity for the neighbors that do live around this area. It does increase property values for the homes in this area. So, Mayor, with that, I'm supportive of this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. I believe we have a motion and a second. Was that second by Councilmember Spence? Thank you. Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That completes our public hearing items and moves us to our administrative items. We have a special presentation tonight. It's the update on the Refresh for the Land Development Code. And from a historical perspective, we had a subcommittee of the council. All three of those subcommittee members are no longer on our council. I guess this was the project that broke them, but we've had them go through our entire land development code. What happens, and is typical in government over time, is that that document had been modified many, many times without a comprehensive review of how all the pieces fit together and we thought that it was time to go ahead and embark on that. This has been a more than a year-long process and I believe we have Amy Thames presenting on the Land Development Code Refresh.
Good evening, Mayor Daniels, Vice Mayor, and Town Council Members. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you great.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen here as soon as I get permission and I've got a PowerPoint presentation to go over what we've worked on over the last year and a half. And I could have permission to share my screen. There we go. And you should have it up on your screen at this time.
Probably needs a couple more seconds. There we go.
Okay, alrighty. So, yes, Mayor Daniels back in 2018, the winter of 2018, a subcommittee was assigned to review the Land Development Code. That subcommittee consisted of Bridget Peterson as the chair, Eddie Cook, and Jordan Ray. And all three council members, you're correct, did leave the committee as of April of this year and I would like to think I did not break them, but we did work long and hard on this over the last year or so and of course, it doesn't want to forward for me now. There we go. The journey, we took into account the Town Council direction that was provided to us. Subcommittee members attended each of the bi-weekly meetings. Staff from various departments attended and it was public meetings. So, we did have members of the public attend. In fact, Councilmember September attended prior to being appointed to Planning Commission and then later to Town Council and did attend a few of those meetings with us. We had color-coded tracking. We did it all during, in Bluebeam with markups. We also reviewed various codes and did research through peer communities as well as looking at new formatting and graphics. So, to remember some of the targets that were provided to us as goals over that time period, and we always had in our little upper-right corner when we started each meeting, our color coding and our goals. And so, we were tasked with removing oversome burdensome regulation, removal of outdated regulation, updating regulations per current market conditions, and trying to be flexible with the process as well as with the approach. So, looking for ways that maybe we can make it more administrative or add various avenues that you could take depending on what the task was at hand for the change. Trying new ideas, to not be scared to look at something and say, "Is there a better way to do this?" And I'd like to say, "I'd rather fail trying than to never have tried." So, we were willing to put ourselves out there and try looking at new directions and new ways to approach topics. And we wanted to think as a subcommittee and as a group, like the end user, who's using this? What are their needs? What kind of questions are they gonna ask? And are they gonna understand what the answers are? So, even though this is a legal document, we really wanted the Land Development Code to say it simply and to not, to not be confusing to people. I'd like to say that if you had to say, "Huh," after reading a paragraph or a sentence, it probably wasn't real well-written and we probably needed to have a look at saying it differently. We wanted consistency between documents, not only town documents, but within the document itself. So, we looked at various documents that have been recently published. We looked at it for modernization, for consistency of graphics, but also consistency of content and terminology. And we like to say, you know, the picture's worth a thousand words. And once again, we were really turning to graphics because just as a teacher uses different methods to explain a subject to their students, not only should we have it well-written, but we should also have it well-illustrated. And then, of course, staff is always available to answer any nuances that may come up. So, with that being said, where did the discussion items come from and how were they addressed? The LDC text amendments that you've seen over the years have all been gathered and brought forward based on an ongoing spreadsheet that staff keeps. And the spreadsheet starts with, that did start with staff comments. Comments about confusing language, inconsistencies or conflicts within the code, and comments made by residents and applicants over time. Some of these were just, whether they be confusion or whether it's something that had to have an interpretation made, or even looking at planned area development modification requests. If it's requested time and time again, is the market different? What has changed? Why is it constantly being asked for? What about code is causing a problem possibly with it and could we address it? So, and also what code compliance issues have been out there over the years that maybe keep popping up time and time again that need to be addressed? So, the yellow dots you see on the screen were the way we represented during the meetings if something needed for the research. And whenever the conversation started with, "What does that mean?" or "Why do we?" or "Can we?" I knew a yellow dot was coming and there were lots and lots of yellow dots. So, with research, these are just some of the topics we researched. Once again, the spreadsheet's our best friend and we kept a lot of spreadsheets about these. But we looked at things like stagger. Is the market changed? Is a stagger necessary? The reason that it was created, about two cars facing forward with a garage, two-car garage, maybe that's not exactly the way market is anymore and does that requirement still need to be there? Lock coverage is a common planned area development request. Are we too restrictive on our lock coverage? Could we open it up some more? But what, what other can of worms might that open? So, there had to be further discussions and research. Step backs. Are we maybe limiting the way building and construction can occur? Does it need, does a step back need to occur everywhere? What are peer communities doing to deal with massing or light and air restrictions? Another one that's, we talk a lot about is guest quarters and secondary dwelling units. Could it be combined into a singular topic? Could they just have a full kitchen and maybe the whole kitchen conversation could end? And does it still need an AUP? It originally started out as a use permit process and then went to administrative use permit process. And now, are we comfortable with taking it out of the administrative use permit process and allowing a secondary dwelling by right? Or changing it to an accessory dwelling unit and allowing it by right, which is what ended up happening with the recommendation by the subcommittee? Another thing we looked at is the number of use permits out there that are required. Instead of allowing a use by right, a use permit was required. So, were they required? Because at the time the code was written, the land use was somewhat uncomfortable or we weren't sure how it was gonna go. Maybe it was new to the industry or we weren't sure, as Gilbert was growing, how it would integrate into the community. So, we looked at a lot of those. And I can tell you that after reviewing the table in Section 2.9 of the Land Development Code, it was determined through recommendations of the subcommittee that 34% of the land uses requiring a use permit no longer would require a use permit. Those, those uses would be allowed by right. So, a lot of those used in that table became peas, which was really exciting. There were also 51 land uses that were not addressed or not permitted by right, which now, based on the subcommittee's recommendation, would now be permitted by right. And as we move forward and we go through the process, the public hearing process and such coming forward, we will be highlighting those and showing you which ones were changing and what the decisions were. With all that being said, with all the research and discussions that happened, there were some exclusions that the subcommittee decided to make from this Land Development Code Refresh. One of them was the parking table of off-street parking requirements. With a lot of discussions and a lot of requests to amend various parking requirements, it became very apparent that staff needed to step back and take time to really review this parking table and to reach out with, for assistance. So, in this next fiscal year's budget, we have earmarked some So in this next fiscal year's budget, we have earmarked some funds to hire a subconsultant to sit down and go over the parking table with us. Because parking is an ever-changing topic with its technology out there, with alternatives that are out there, and with the way lifestyles are changing. And it's not an easy knee-jerk action to just say, let's just change this ratio one way or the other. We really need to look at it holistically and to look for the future and to try to really build in that flexibility for the way things are going. And we're going to get our crystal ball out and try to predict the future, which we all know is very difficult. The same goes for WCF, so Wireless Facilities, as well as over-air devices. We elected not to amend these chapters because, once again, we think that there could be some flexibility built in to address the way the industry's moving and technology is moving, and hopefully look at some processes that might be able to simplify some of the tasks at hand. Another topic that we had to exclude making any major changes to is, I will say, it was personally one of my goals, is to take all the animal regulations and to put them into one simplified table. But it became very obvious, very quickly, that the animals are very tied to municipal code. And you can't really change what's happening with the animals in the Land Development Code without also addressing it in the municipal code at the same time. So this was one we had to put in a parking lot, so to speak, and we're going to have to come back with the municipal code amendment in hand at the same time to be able to address the animals and to maybe put it into a more simplified table. Common area ownership, maintenance, and enforcement, that is, once again, also very closely tied to the municipal code, and we would like to see that amended and edited at the same time as the municipal code. So we're going, the subcommittee made those recommendations that we just reformat and pick up any typos or any clerical updates, but nothing of content or intent to do with those, the items you see listed on the screen. Key modifications, the idea about reorganization of the Land Development Code, the code should not be a seek-and-find puzzle. As much as I enjoy them, I don't enjoy it as my Land Development Code. And so in the reorganization, the idea was, once again, to think like the way a resident, an applicant, a designer would go through the progression of thinking about the code. What was the first thing they would look for? What's the second thing? And the third, and so on and so forth? And to try to come up with a really simplified pattern to the Land Development Code that becomes somewhat intuitive and that it's, it's not a confusing, long document. I mean, currently, it is a 500-page document, and we will talk about page count in a little bit. But, and what else do you need to know? What basics do you need to know in order to do a project, in order to do a design? If I want to build a shed on my property, what do I need to know? And it should be simple and easy to find with pop-ups or links that take you to secondary topics very cleanly and easily, and graphics where you need them. So embedded graphics, I don't have to go back to an appendices and page through an appendices. So what I have for you are some examples of where we're at today. So one of the goals was to bring each zoning district its own page with its own information, simplified, and I know it might be hard to read on a big screen, it really is intended for eight and a half by 11. But you have, on the right-hand side in the table, you have the principal dwelling units, all the requirements regarding that. If you need to know about fencing, if you need to know about home occupation, there's links that take you there. And then on the left-hand side, you've got a short little write-up blurb about what that district's about and what the key elements are that make up that district. And then accessory structures. I want to build a shed. What are my rules? And if I want to build an accessory dwelling unit, the mother-in-law unit, or the guest quarters, or however you'd like to term it, there's a link there that takes you to that specific section that will outline all of it on a single page. So keeping it very simple, and there will be an axonometric drawing at the bottom of each page so that it clearly explains the terminology being used and how you would apply it to that zoning district. The same would be for commercial zoning districts, each commercial zoning district, and so on and so forth, for each of the 27 zoning districts. So just to sort of explain where we're at with some of this, and so for single-family, let's say, the, under the old, the current code, there's 49 pages that pertain to single-family residential, plus 26 graphics in the appendices, which adds up to 75 pages. In this new formatted document, which you are seeing here on your screen, except this is commercial, so I'll go back one, what you see on your screen, it is 50 pages for the single-family residential portion with the graphics embedded. That's a 33% reduction in pages that somebody has to page through to figure out the answer to their question. And I can tell you that it was 14,000 words before, it's 12,000 words now, but to me, counting the words isn't as important as what is the content you're looking at on this page? And does it help you to figure out quickly and easily what you need to do to move forward with your goal, whatever that may be? So another thing, and I know that this table may be a little overwhelming-looking, but actually, it's not as overwhelming as the 17 pages of text that you had to read through to figure out if you could put a fence on your property line. So by, once you look at this table and you realize that this is the zoning district I'm in, and this is where I want to put my fence, you can figure it out in four pages plus one table and one flow chart, for a total of six pages. Much more simple, much more easily understandable. And I would like to add that of those four pages that are left, two of them are all about the process if you want to amend something to do with this table, which is the wall and fence modifications. So that I couldn't fit in a table, but I did try. So as far as the next table, signs, one of our favorite topics, freestanding monument signs, any of the permanent signs. Right now, there is a huge section of the text of the Land Development Code dedicated to signs. So I took on the challenge of, could I put it into a table? And I did manage to get it all into one table, however, the intent was never to have a singular fold-out piece of paper with everything on a single page. That was, that would be really, truly overwhelming. But what we did end up doing is for each class of a permanent sign, whether it's a wall sign, a freestanding monument sign, an address sign, a projecting roof sign, each one will have a table that says its regulations, what's allowed for your zoning district, and what the rules are. And simplifies it much more than words and words and gobs and gobs of text, paragraph after paragraph that you have to weed through. And at the end of reading it, you go, did that last part apply to me? That's what we don't want. We want you to understand, if I'm in a commercial district and this is what I want to do, this is, these are the rules I follow to do it. Easy, simple, keep it on one page. We also said that if we have processes listed in the code and it's a step-by-step process, can we put it in a flow chart? Can we simplify it? Can we put it in a graphic format and get rid of a lot of the words? So we did add seven flow charts to the Land Development Code, and to date, we are here. We are at articles reviewed. We've reviewed every article of the Land Development Code. I will say, of the subcommittee appointed to this topic, they reviewed every article of the Land Development Code except the four subdivision chapters at the very end of the code. Instead of finishing with those at our last meeting, we circled back to touch on research again because we needed some of the decisions made from the research that was completed, and we really wanted the subcommittee's input. The subdivision section of the Land Development Code had a lot of engineering in it, had a lot of checklists in it, and those checklists were removed. So really, those sections have been shortened quite a bit, and we will make sure that anything that is being brought forward that was not reviewed and discussed and direction provided by the subcommittee will be brought back very clearly in the public review process so that everyone knows that staff is making those recommendations outside of the boundaries of the subcommittee that was appointed. We would also like to point out that as of today, we're well over a third with the articles formatted and ready for graphics. The graphics were put on hold. We were about to enter into progressing forward those in late March when they had to get set aside for a little bit here. We're hoping to get moving with them again in the near future so that they can all be brought forward because this document really does incorporate those graphics, and they're very important to the final output. Flow charts, we were working on our very last one or two today. Tables prepared, they're done. Definitions and terms. One of the things that we identified as a subcommittee was that the land use definitions and the glossary of terms were two separate definition sections. And that really confused a lot of our applicants, and a lot of other municipalities have stopped separating them and combined them. And we agreed that we think that is a very good way to go. So we took them, but we made the land use definitions bolded so that you could determine what's a land use definition versus what's just standard terminology. So we did keep it separate yet together, if that makes sense. But we're, we're really happy with the way that's turning out. We also added new terminology when necessary, and we updated terms in these definitions to be more up-to-date with the general standards that people are used, and words that people are used to referring to things as. All the graphics still need to be revised and done. We are basing them on axonometric drawings similar to those that Amanda Elliott will be bringing forward to you in the Heritage Design Guidelines. And once again, going for consistency and clarity and ease of, ease of reading. With that, where do we go from here? After we finish up with the drafts we're working on right now, we will move forward to a text amendment initiation, and I'm hoping to do that within the next month or two, which is moving to Planning Commission where we have public comment, and we open up the text amendment initiation and initiate it, which then would allow it to go to public review, which we would like to post the document on the web, just like we did with the General Plan Amendment that recently went through and is going to the voters. So that everyone can see it at the same time, and we can get the, we can get input from everyone because it really is a public document, and we want to hear from the people who are going to use it. Once we gather all that input and we come back, we will also be moving to study sessions with the redevelopment commission, with the planning commission, going over anything that's changed since the subcommittee made recommendations, any input we receive from the public that we want to incorporate, and any other pickups that we feel need to be specifically pointed out and discussed. The final document would then be drafted. We will have legal counsel look it over one last time, and then we'll start a final public hearing process, which will go through RDC for recommendation, Planning Commission hearing for a recommendation to Town Council, and then on to Town Council. So with that being said, any questions you may have, I'm happy to answer them, but thank you so much for your time, and I look forward, Mayor, to putting this document approved in your hands by December.
We call that just in time.
I know, nick of time.
As you can tell, this is a tremendous amount of work. And Amy, I want to pass along compliments that I've received from multiple members of your subcommittee, those councilmembers, but also really the thorough nature with which you guys attacked this. We know, we knew, because we've had lots of conversations on the dais about discrepancies or confusion amongst the Land Development Code. And so while the task was large, I think the gain from doing this is huge. So thank you for the work that you've done. Vice Mayor, did you want to add something?
Just a question. Amy, are A-frames still in there?
A-frames are still in there, yes, they are.
They are.
Please vote yes. I'm going to start lobbying you now. Any other comments from council? So how many pages? We were 500, I think, over 500?
Yeah, and Mayor, I would love to have a final count for you. We were, I think it's at 467 is the actual number, but I'd have to double-check that. Close to 500, let's just say, not counting documents attached, such as design guidelines and such, but just the actual LDC text. And just, my gut is, we're going to reduce it by at least a third, but I don't have a final total amount because we're still formatting some of the chapters. But based on the single-family chapter that we are 100% finished with, we were a third down. It seems like the commercial chapter, we're at least a quarter to a third down. So for all those chapters, and I was just going over the planned area development and overlay district chapters today, and they're consistent with the way the others are. And what's impressive about that in being a third or even a quarter less pages is that we've taken the graphics and embedded them. So to be able to embed and to have placeholders for the graphics that we know the size and the shape they're most likely going to be, and still be a reduced page count is, is really a great thing, and we're very happy. And I, we think the formatting has helped a lot, but just overall, trying to simplify the words.
Yeah, and that wasn't the only goal, obviously, not just to reduce the number of pages, but the clarity and really the consistency of the document is what we were going for. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. I don't know if you were, maybe Amy's the best one to answer this, but I'm guessing that there's probably a lot of process work that's done, but there's probably some things from a policy standpoint we should be taking up in the process of reviewing. Is there a capture mechanism that, where we can line up and, you know, be able to review and see if we want to take that up as a council? Is that part of the process here that we can be gathering, at least gathering to review at a future date?
I think when we get our draft, have at it, is kind of what I would say, and start working on that. It's going to go through a substantial process with Planning Commission, Redevelopment Commission, and then to the Town Council. But I, I think the draft is there for everyone to look through from a policy standpoint. You know, I'm not sure we've necessarily removed requirements, but rather certainly made them cohesive.
Yeah, that sounds great. I didn't know if, as they're looking to harmonize these, they see some conflicting policies or, you know, some parking lots.
Exactly what they did, yeah.
Oh, that's great. Appreciate that.
We did. Councilmember, Mayor, councilmember, most definitely, we cleaned up any inconsistencies throughout the Land Development Code and conflicts, smoothed some other things out. We found in a lot of cases that maybe it was just adding a definition or changing a word made a huge difference with the way it was being understood. So sometimes it was simple as that, and sometimes it took a whole rewrite of a section. But what I will try to do for you, because so much of the Land Development Code was reorganized in order to provide clarity, that it's really one of those documents, it's going to be a hard document to follow with strikeouts. So what I think I'm going to try to provide for everyone as we go through the process is some kind of spreadsheet, you know, I mean, spreadsheets, but some kind of spreadsheet so that we can identify what topics were changed, and so that you can easily identify where something was changed and how was it changed in a simple blurb. So I'm going to be working on that, going back through the markups we did, tying them to the changes made, and whether it was a subcommittee recommendation or whether it's one of those that has been made post-subcommittee. So just trying to make that clear, where the recommendations came from, and I hope that helps.
I think that's tremendously helpful. It certainly was for the Building Code Committee when Larry was able to consolidate that. Amy, thank you for the work. Appreciate that follow-up.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor has something. So Amy, thank you very much for your work. I remember many months ago, and I was just a spectator in the meeting, but we were, you were talking about parking stalls and how wide, how deep, how many. And that conversation went on for almost an hour, and I remember all of the input that people in the room had about this topic. And I was so impressed about the detail of parking stalls because it's something that a lot of people don't think about until you have to get out of your car. And the cars next to you are so close that you have to kind of be a contortionist to get out of your vehicle, and it's tough. And so it's nice that we had that dialogue and staff considered all of those different options before settling on something. And I was just very impressed with that process. I want to thank you for that. I believe that same amount of detail went into the rest of the changes that you entertained in the LDC, and I just want to thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
I don't see any other comments. Amy, thank you again. And we will reiterate Costco-sized parking stalls. Those are my preference.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and have a good evening.
Thanks, Amy. All right, that moves us to boards, commission, and committee reports. Anything from council? Seeing none, we will move to Agenda Item 27, Policy Items, and the Policies of Responsible Financial Management. There's a document that continues to grow, but for good reason. We have Kelly on the line. We have Kelly on the line.
As you mentioned, this is our financial policies. There are three major changes here, looking at some post issuance compliance changes, staying in line with federal regulations. And then we have just a small change on our PSPRS policy, just saying, kind of indicating that as we're getting closer to our target funding area, that we have all five as an option, but we may not be implementing all five options at the same time. And then also adding data policy, recognizing that the town is very data-driven and we wanted to include that in our financial policies, formally recognizing that that is a main goal of our town. And that's pretty much the policy changes that you see in there. I'm happy to answer specific questions if you have them.
Kelly, any questions from the council on the changes to the financial policies? It's a great framework and it certainly guides us, so thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion for Agenda Item 27.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second, please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to our communication items. Any report from the town manager on current events?
Done this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Patrick, report from council on current events.
Seeing none, I will add a report from the mayor on current events. I want to be both delicate and firm, but this is a difficult time, not just for our community, but for our country. And I think there's a particular sensitivity right now, especially around the protests and our acknowledgement and support of people of color and also anyone else who has been treated unfairly in any way, shape or form. As a community, we emphasize kindness on a very regular basis and I want to make sure that as a community, we are doing our best listening right now. I think there are a lot of statements and things being made and said that could be beneficial to us as a community. And so I would just encourage both us as a council and as leaders of this community. I know our town staff and our town employees not only deserve to be heard, but also deserve to take some time to listen. That is a really important component. And I know that for myself, I have a lot to learn and I want to take time to listen and to hear the messages that are being sent to us. So I would encourage the community to reach out to us as a council, make sure that we hear your voice and we are working on planning a few things to allow more forums and opportunities for good listening to be occurring. So I don't have details to share just yet on that effort, but I think it could be a really positive thing for all of us in this community to be good listeners. So with that, thank you all and be safe. I actually do want to acknowledge as well our police department and our public safety teams. We don't always get it right, but we want to and we desire to. I've had lots of conversations with Chief Solberg and others in our public safety teams and I have a huge gratitude for them and for their work as well. It's not an easy job and want to see all of the members of our public safety teams also remain safe throughout all of this. So both sensitively and firmly, this community does believe both in justice and in order and also in being kind and being good stewards and also in being compassionate and empathetic listeners. So thank you. With that, meeting adjourned.